This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, May 21st. Please stand for the invocation provided by Pastor Tony Legere and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Good morning. Our Father, we welcome you into this room today. We humble ourselves before you, but we're so thankful that we may have a relationship with you, that we might exchange our self-righteousness for the righteousness you impart through Christ. As we gather today at the city gates, we express a reliance upon your wisdom, the expressions of your scriptures, and we thank you for the word that comforts us. It says, "The name of the Lord is a strong tower, and the righteous run to it and are saved." May our leaders today draw great comfort in this city from our reliance upon you, a good God, and favor us here today with your mind. Through Christ, we pray. Amen. Amen.
Through the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice on.
Roll call. Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Council President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Councilmember Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see everyone this Wednesday, Tuesday morning, May 21st, 2024, uh, welcome to our meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules at this time. I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, including cell phones, please at this time put it on the off or the vibrated position, the off or the vibrated position. Any person that is desiring to address the council must sign in indicating their ordinance, the resolution, appeal, a public here agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name. Any person that is desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk office no later than 2:00 PM the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the council must be identified and pertain to the city of Mobile business. Any person that has not given a proper notice to the city clerk office and would like to talk on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is given three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there has to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements ought to be made to the chair, who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. And just for your knowledge, the chair is not deaf. I can hear you even without the mic, so you don't have to holler. Amen? Okay, then. When you come down here and speak, you don't have to holler. I can hear you without the mic, so you don't have to holler at all. Okay? To maintain decorum, there shall be no undue applause or applause or cry aloud, Madam Clerk.
Approval of minutes of May 14th.
So moved. Second.
And properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes approved.
Communications from Mayor Stimson.
President Small, I'll be making, um, I bring greetings from Mayor Stimson, who could not be here today, but, um, I'll be making comments on his behalf or reading two proclamation, two proclamations on his behalf. I'd ask that, um, the first proclamation has to do with Public Works Week proclamation. Can I get Shonda Smith, as long as the executive director of public services, as well as any of her public works teams that are present? Podium? Yeah. All right. And the proclamation reads as follows, "Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities into public health, high quality of life, well-being of people of the city of Mobile, Alabama. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, solid waste systems, public buildings, other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. And whereas it is the public interest for citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Mobile to gain knowledge and maintain ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works, first responders, and public works programs in their respective communities. Now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, 108th Mayor of the city of Mobile, do hereby proclaim May 19th through 25th, 2024 as Public Works Week in the city of Mobile, done at the city of Mobile, Alabama, this 21st day of May 2024. Signed, William S. Stimson." Also, this is Coast Guard National Safe Boating Week. Um, I'd like to call on Eric B. Beck, Vice Commander of the 3rd Division of the 8th Coastal Region of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary. Proclamation reads as follows, "Whereas many residents engage in boating, fishing, and other recreational activities on navigable waters around the city of Mobile, Alabama. And whereas, on average, more than 600 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the United States, and more than 2,000 are injured on average. And whereas, many of these accidents are caused by human error, poor judgment, consuming alcohol, or operator inattention, inattention, and experience, and not by the boat, the equipment, or environmental factors. Whereas, a significant number of voters, voters who have lost their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. And whereas, the United States Coast Guard statistics show that 75% of boating deaths occurred on boats where the operator had never received boating education instruction. And whereas, boating safety courses and campaigns can teach people how to adhere to better boating practices and help them operate their boats safely on the water. Now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, 108th Mayor of the city of Mobile, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as National Safe Boating Week in the city of Mobile. We join together with the United States Coast Guard to promote the year-round effort to promote safe boating in our community, done at the city of Mobile, Alabama, this 21st day of May 2024. Signed, William S. Stimson."
Mr. Chair, thank you to the city council, as well as the mayor's office, for the support that you all have consistently shown towards the U.S. Coast Guard's National Safe Boating Week and the citizenry of the city of Mobile. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you for all your hard work.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the support.
President, I'm gonna call on Executive Director of Public Safety, Rob Lasky, to introduce, uh, our public safety officers of the month.
Chief Morris, do you want to make the voting, please?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're first, that's why we're kind of smiling and excited right now. The Mobile Fire Rescue Department probably recognizes Fire Service Driver, Michael Todd Allman, um, as our firefighter of the month for the month of April, uh, 2024. Todd joined the department in 1994. Todd has exhibited through the years the, the efforts of being a public service and servant to the city of Mobile on and off the job. What he did to commend him this time was he helped save a young man's life at Grabine Island with his family. Um, the man was injured in the water, and he wasn't breathing, and had probably had a suspected spinal injury. Todd was able to assess the situation, stabilize the man, um, cervical spine, took care of him with emergency procedures, and began CPR until the medical helicopter arrived. Um, he's a true dedication to our profession. He's one of our servants that has been on 30 years, and he's continued showing the younger guys how to be a first responder, how to be a public servant, and he did this off duty. That just goes to show you that, um, they are public servants, they are part of our department, they're part of the city on and off duty. So I introduce you, firefighter of the month, Driver Todd Allman.
Congratulations.
Morning, council. Thank you for having me here, uh, staff as well. Introduce to you Jonathan Chris, which you probably already know because he was here in January, so this is his second time this year. He had 141 calls and 32 backings, 16 felonies and 100 misdemeanors, but that doesn't describe what Jonathan does. Jonathan is very dogged about finding the bolos where people are wanted for crimes and warrants are already issued on them and going out and finding them. Uh, he has a, uh, niche for it. As a matter of fact, he was telling me a while ago that, uh, Captain Lafitte wants to put him in his investigative unit now because he can catch so many criminals. He's, uh, exceptional, and at the luncheon the other day, Captain Lafitte said there's two things that, uh, Jonathan lights up at. If you talk about his family, or if you talk about catching a bad guy. So we appreciate everything you do and congratulations.
Congratulations.
That'll conclude the measure marks.
Thank you.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
And properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda's adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for waivers of the noise ordinance at Tricentennial Park on July 4th from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, at James Seals Park on May 25th from 3:00 PM until 6:00 PM, at Cathedral Square on May 25th from 7:00 PM until 10:00 PM, at Cathedral Square from noon until 2:00 PM, at 1410 Government Street on May 31st from 5:00 PM until 10:00 PM, at 554 Marine Street on June 1st from 3:00 PM until 8:00 PM, at 2705 Griffith Circle on May 25th from 6:30 PM until 11:00 PM, at Medal of Honor Park on May 25th from 7:00 PM until 9:00 PM, and at Medal of Honor Park on June 1st from 7:30 AM until 10:00 AM.
So moved. Second.
And properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes.
Public hearings. Today is the public hearing to consider modification of a previously approved planned unit development for property located at 145, 151, 176, 195, 350, and 400 Dunlap Drive.
This opened up the public hearing for these particular said items. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this item? If so, you may come down to the podium by stating your name. Again, is anyone present? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to declare the structures at 601 Tata Street, 550 Williams Street, 2859 Ralston Road, public nuisancees, and order them demolished.
This opened up the public hearing for these particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? You come down to the podium by stating your name.
Daniel Griffin. I have 550 Williams Street.
Yes, sir.
David Zimmerman, my lawyer, was supposed to be here today. I don't, I haven't seen him.
He's right behind you.
Oh, okay. Oh, there he is. That's why I didn't see. Can't turn around that far. Injuries. Motors off.
Small, I'm Timothy Shepherd.
You got the clip closer, Mike.
I'm Timothy Shepherd. I am, my firm represents Mr. Griffin. We would ask this council to grant some more time so that we can move forward and make the necessary changes.
Um, Carol.
Just a few questions. Uh, one, do you have a written plan in place?
Again.
Normally, there's a requirement for a written plan to be presented to, uh, the property department along with a drawing or schedule of values, scope of work to determine the cost of repairs and show what you're doing, and a permit pool. Have we, have you done that yet?
We have not gotten that yet.
Normally, I see David's in that corner up there, but he's moved. David, do we have time to allow them to get the proper information to you? Guys, if I allow 30 days for you to get the plan to the property department and purchase a permit and start the repairs, is that enough time? Sir?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll, uh, let over 30 days and give you guys enough time to get your building permit and everything in place to start your repairs.
Thank you.
Is anyone else present that would like to address the council on these particular said items?
Yes, my name is Felicia Lewis. Yes, I'm addressing the property on 601 Tata Street. Yeah, I applied through the, uh, Community Reinvestment Program Grant, so I'm in the process of, uh, submitted an application, so I'm in the process of getting that done right now.
Mr. Carroll, you have a comment?
I met you in Lowe's, right?
Yes.
She ran me down in Lowe's to talk to me about this property. I went by and looked at it. The same thing, um, there's a process that if you're gonna restore the property and fix it and secure it, that we have to go through. I don't know if I explained that in detail well enough for you to, for me to slow this process down and help you to restore the property, but the guy is sitting right up top. Recommendations, David? Do, do, can I give her time to get the procedure done, or I can? Okay. I'm gonna grant 30 days to get the procedure done so that you can start the cleanup and repair and safety of the property. If not, then we have to move forward. That house is in pretty bad shape. I went by there.
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry, I was talking to the gentleman upstairs. What's the address of this?
This is Tata Street.
Yes, sir.
Is 30 days enough for you?
30 days, yes.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. 30 days.
Thank you.
Is anyone else present that would like to address the council on these particular said items? If not, these public hearings are closed.
Public hearing to fix cause for demolition or securing of structures at 1324 Jesse Street, 609 South Wilson Avenue, 1163 Gents Street, 1555 Clover Street, 515 Yoker Street, 1567, and 1575 Robert E. Lee Street, 1353 Windsor Avenue, 5450 Coca-Cola Road, and 7272 14th Street.
Is anyone present that would like to address the council on these particular said items? If not, these public hearings are closed.
Public hearing to consider the application of Nacia Pope for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a non-emergency medical transport service.
Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this particular said item? If so, you may come down to the podium by stating your name. If not, this particular public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Lisa Taggart.
I'm a little nervous. My name is Lisa Taggart, and I have a small nonprofit called Door Disrenity in District 2. District visited the houses. They're homes for people who suffer from substance use disorder. We're gonna be opening up our third, um, approximately three weeks. And, um, the city has received $2.2 million in opioid funds that are just sitting in a bank account. And I've requested information on how do we apply, how much money was received. I received that answer. Who was given the funds? And I received that answer. The city of Mobile allocated $200,000 to Veterans Recovery, much needed, and the $10,000 to Drug Education Council. We still have over $2 million sitting there and not helping anybody. So I wanna know, how do we apply, not only my nonprofit, who houses, educate, and, um, and, um, so nervous. But how could the other community nonprofits apply for these funds? And I've gotten no answer. Um, I spoke with legal right before the meeting shortly, and that there's not a process yet. And, um, people are dying on our streets. You could go down Spring Hill Avenue, and you could see people that are passed out. Unfortunately, my sister has OD'd over this, and this was what started me into the nonprofit sector of sober living. So that's what I'd like to know, is, is there a fair process to get allocated these funds? I know that two people who were given funds were given funds due to past performance contracts. And, um, so yeah, $2 million can save a lot of lives.
Yeah, first of all, you have my condolences on your sister, and thank you so much for all that you're doing for our community. I'm gonna ask the, uh, city attorney if he could address the questions about how can nonprofits apply for this, this money?
Sure, Mr. President. So the two things that she asked was the questions of who received money. We answered that question before today, and I just wanna make that clear, and the amounts. So that amount, that information was given, but what got given right before the meeting?
Could you, just for the public to know, could you tell us those two entities?
Sure, it's the same, same two that I talked about in pre-council, which was Veterans Recovery and the Drug Education Council, and those were both through existing performance contracts.
Would you like a copy? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I've emailed a copy of both of those performance contracts to the council and to the clerk's office, um, as requested. And so, in the same way the chief of staff referenced, here's, here's what occurred. Through the normal budgeting process, the performance contracts were allocated. So to Mr. Reynolds' earlier question, that $200,000 that Veterans Recovery received came from the opioid funds. Money is fungible, it's all in the general fund. Those were the only two existing performance entities that we had that would fall into the category to be eligible for opioid funds. The second part of this, and this is what we're getting to, in the next 60 days, we're going to have to create a process so that other entities that don't have existing performance contracts with us will know the parameters. The reason for that is, we didn't know the parameters when these funds were first paid to the city. We didn't know exactly what all of them would be, and we had to make sure they're aligned because of three tranches of money, and those parameters are slightly different. But we'll put together a process and then send that out so it'll be open and competitive. Ms. Taggart asked for that information. We told her, we'll send it out to everybody at the same time, so it is fair and competitive, so that we're able to, one, help the people who need it, and, two, actively make sure that we're following the guidelines set out by the settlement. And so, um, that information will be provided to the council once we have it, and it'll be provided to the general public once we have it. I hope that has answered your questions.
Mr. President?
Uh, yes.
Attorney Woods, do we have a, a timeline that we have to spend these funds by?
No. No, there's, there's not a specific timeline on these particular funds.
You have to direct me. Anything else that you had?
Yes, sir. The guidelines of the settlement. You stated that there were guidelines to the settlement on how to spend these funds. Then that should be open public information, correct? Can I, can I and everybody else have that?
Yeah, as he has stated, that he will give that information to you. Uh, just look out for it in the next 45 to 60 days and everything. But they would, as the city attorney stated, he will send it to you and others and everything.
Right. Be happy to.
All right. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you so much for everything you do. Thank you for your time.
Mr. President?
Uh, yes.
I just wanna make sure that hopefully I know, and I'm glad that, that, uh, Ms. Lisa came down and talked about that information, knowing that we have $2 million, um, for funds to help our community and our city. Hopefully, we're getting prepared for this next year budget to be able to, 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 to make sure that we can get these funds to nonprofit organizations to be able to do this work, so.
So let me, let me also clarify this, and I, and I know this is the first time it's come up in a public setting. The funds are not just limited to nonprofits. There's also a public safety component that deals with it, um, with, with prevention, with preventing people from dying, whether you're buying, um, actually purchasing Narcan and things of that sort. Uh, and then there's also a component that deals with the criminal justice system, and what would probably be contemplated is that some form of it would go to drug court. All of those things would have to come before the council, um, as, as we move forward. All of it is part of the expenditure process, the budgeting process. And I wanna clarify, too, that the Drug Education Council, um, the Drug Education Council Fund that was below the $15,000 threshold, so it would not have come before the council. And then the, the reason it's $10,000 is there's a 1,500 discretionary amount that also got funded. So in total, we're talking about $200,000 going to Veterans Recovery, and then a total of $10,000 that went to Drug Education Council. And they're probably not aware that these were actually opioid funds because it funded those performance contracts, but they do meet the parameters because of the work that they do.
Okay. And I, and I'm glad you brought that up, um, Attorney Woods. Um, and with that being said, for me, from my office, I would love to see a strategy plan, um, that when they're presented to the council, why is going to certain parts of the administration for public safety, um, and how it would benefit if it go to, uh, court, um, and how did, um, other municipalities utilize this to benefit this, this situation that we're seeing take place? I would love to, to see those things, um, to make sure that we're using our funds properly. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Carroll.
Thank you. Uh, I appreciate the, uh, performance contracts being sent over to the office. Uh, just briefly looking through them, uh, it appears that they were signed on, um, to January 23, and that the original signature was, uh, December 20, December, I think, 20-something of '22. That was actually after our budgeting process. Were these funds shown in the previous budget?
Great question, yes.
Uh, what line, where were they shown in the previous budget?
So if you all remember the budgeting process, um, so I, I couldn't point you a line item, but there was a great deal of discussion about what Veterans Recovery would, would get. Uh, I, I think everybody probably remembers that well, because there was this big back and forth between Veterans Recovery, what they were gonna get, how they were gonna get it, and we came to the number 200,000. That same number is exactly what you see on the performance contract, and that's how it happened. I can more than happy, if you want to, um, if you wanna help me look through the budget, we can find you that $200,000 number because it's probably in there. If not, you can probably go back and look at the videos and see when we were going back and forth with that 200,000 for Veterans Recovery, because there's a big thing about Altapoint, how much they were gonna get. and then there was a change, and there was a switch, and that's when that happened. So, if memory serves me correctly, you'll have a record of all of that and be able to see it.
Counselor, I saw the performance contracts. I'm talking about the two point two million dollars. What is it showing the budget?
It doesn't, it's in the general fund. But it is, money is fungible, so it is, it is restricted in the way that it sits in the general fund because of the parameters. So if there's a level of confusion, let me explain, explain it in this way. All monies that come in, all monies that come in either go into capital or the general fund. Sometimes those funds are restricted even, either by one of two ways. Either they're encumbered because they have to be paid, they have to pay, be paid in some way, shape, or form to something we're already entitled to pay, or, two, there are particular parameters on those funds, whether they be federal, state, or otherwise, which that otherwise would include this type of settlement. More than happy to answer any of your questions, though.
I, I hear you. I, I thought that the council was responsible for management of all finances other than setting the budget. We have to approve it all. So at what point did the council approve any of this?
I can go back and get you, what do you mean this? I, I need a clarity.
Where's, I mean, at what point did the council approve the, the two point two million dollars going into the budget? And at what point in time did the council approve the performance contract? If it was actually signed after the, after, I saw Lisa's signature on it, so at some point, I know we did approve it, but at what time and where were we made aware of the funding actually coming into the budget? So that we know this council knew how to, to manage it when, in essence, the council is the one that should know about the city's finances, and according to the Zogby Act, we actually manage it. That's all I'm asking. I'm not trying to point at any figures or dig any holes or, you know, in respect of terms or sentences I used last week, but it's just, it's a need to know when this council has that responsibility. You know, as my colleague said, I would love to have a plan outlining how those funds are going to be dispersed, also how a request for qualifications or, or proposals used for a performance contract, so that, you know, we know and we can get that information out to our constituency base. If we've had two million dollars sitting for a while and we know there are people out there that need it, I think that we need to get it to the people that need it.
So I would more than invite you to participate in our process as we come up with it. I am not an expert in dispersing opioid funds. I don't even know any. But to answer your question about whether or not we're managing the budget, so you have to think about this in terms of incoming funds. These funds came in, and that is, that would fall into the revenue category. So you would see on a monthly basis what comes in. That's readily available anytime wants to answer, anybody wants to answer that question or ask that question. As far as it going into the general fund, it either goes into general or capital, and this is not capital funding. And so it went into the general fund, it's been sitting there. The, the information, just like we gave it to Ms. Taggart, is open and available to any council member or any member of the public. That's, that's the best answer I can give you as to what the gross receipts are on a regular basis. As to the funding and authorizing through the budget process, that's a whole different animal.
I appreciate the statement. I'll ask the council president to keep abreast of, of the process so that we can make sure that we make this totally transparent and open to the public so that these funds can go to the people that need them out there. I've visited two of these locations now, one with the owner there and passed by the other without the owner being there, and there's a, a, a large program going that could use our help, and there are two others that could possibly use our help. So it would be very informative to my office and to the people in my district as to the process and where the money is, and make, and also to the council so that we know how to manage it once it comes. I would appreciate if the Chief of Staff would go through his usual process of maybe he and the mayor visiting the facilities and seeing what type of urgent need that may be out there as to we may be able to possibly do a half-year or mid-year performance contract based on the funds that we have in place also. Appreciate the time, Mr. President.
Mr. President? Uh, yes. Ms. Woods, I, I think maybe as we move into everyone's favorite season, budget season, I think maybe if we could potentially get just a better breakdown of what those restricted funds are instead of just like a lump sum, I think that would provide a good bit of clarity to, to us. So if we could just restrict funds, whether we legally restricted or restricted by, I guess, covenants or contract, if we could just get a better breakdown of that, I think that provides some clarity to everybody.
So let, let me make sure that I know what you're asking. Are you just talking about opioid funds or?
I think kind of just for sake of clarity, maybe, maybe all restricted funds, just so that we can kind of get a, I guess, get our minds around that as we enter in the budget.
So we'll pass that request on to finance.
Thank you.
Attorney.
Katie Herndon.
Good morning. My name is Katie Herndon. It will be one year tomorrow that the historic home located at nine eighteen Conti Street was ripped apart, slated to be moved in the dead of the night with not one single permit, and had a neighbor not questioned, the workers, nine twenty would have been right along with it. Those material changes to structures in a historic district are considered a criminal offense according to the Mobile Code of Ordinances, not guidelines, ordinances, which I have provided, and you will see on page, on the second page, section forty-four dash eighty-four, titled Penalty Provisions. It also lists the other enforcement avenues. Yet, the organization responsible for this egregious conduct has never been held accountable, never been fined, never forced to remediate the violation to date. It took a very large group of concerned citizens to bring it to the attention of city departments. The citizens did their job, but the city hasn't done its job. I'm here to seek help in a resolution. To be clear, this isn't something, is, this isn't some little old lady or a family who can't afford all the expensive materials and upkeep of a historic home. This is a nonprofit who purchased historic property knowing the responsibilities that come along with it, and for nine years, nine years, completely ignored them. Their purpose and reason they are a five oh one C three according to their tax documents is that they preserve and protect real property in Mobile. They have received funding in the millions from organizations like Alabama Power Foundation, David J. Cooper Family Foundation, and other entities. This is a group that has board members who have extensive education and background in historic preservation and who advocate for it daily. Yet, these two contributing historic homes are allowed to sit and deteriorate even further. With pressure from the Mobile Historic Development Commission, the owners applied for certificate of appropriateness to do the work on nine eighteen Conti in February. It is May, and not one hammer or nail is in sight. As of today, there are zero plans for nine twenty Conti Street. This is not a one-off situation. This is a systemic issue in Mobile. There's clearly a broken link in enforcing ordinances. We're trying to understand who enforces these ordinance, these historic ordinances, the ones I provided to you. The municipal enforcement department says the historic development department of Build Mobile does, and the historic development department says the municipal enforcement department does. As you can see, not much enforcement going on. For the last month, I've tried to get a meeting with all the departments that have purview of this situation and have been unsuccessful. There has been radio silence to my latest emails requesting the status of setting up a meeting. I'm asking this council to take this seriously, and if we want to be intentional about preservation and actually save houses and buildings, then this needs to be discussed in committee to get to the bottom of where the broken link is and fix it. This is a serious matter that warrants special attention of the enforcement avenues as well as the demolition by neglect provision. It also happens to be Preservation Month, and just last week, a proclamation was read, and many organizations were commended for all their efforts.
And Ms. Herndon?
I'll, I'll extend it, Mr. President.
One minute.
I just have one more sentence.
One minute.
Historic preservation takes all of us working together. Without the city holding folks accountable, we will continue to lose historic houses and structures. Again, I ask that this be taken up in a committee meeting and truly be dealt with. Thank you for your time.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Carroll.
First of all, Katie, let me say thank you for coming down. Katie's probably called me, God, I want to say a hundred times, and emailed me a thousand, and text me ten thousand more about issues within the historic district and also issues along Conti Street and other places. She has, one, asked for a meeting with the various departments to discuss what needs to be done or if anything is going to be done. And I have asked, also asked for that meeting and have only gotten one response, I think of a yes, and that came from Mr. Dokkenbach, who handles nuisance abatement. If this house were, I would say, sitting anywhere else and were allowed to sit there unattached to the piers in somewhat disrepair and continuing to go down, then the, the proper department would already have tagged it wanting to demo it. Prime example, the house at five fifty Osage Street. It wasn't there a week with a limb on it, and we were trying to tear it down immediately. This house has been sitting there now for several months, and we haven't done anything to it, and it's just in disrepair also. So if one person is going to have to follow the laws of nuisance abatement, then we all are. We can't just let one group do something and the other group not do it. So to not pay attention to this structure on this street seems like there may be some type of bias of not allowing or not forcing nuisance abatement on one group but enforcing it on everybody else. If it's going to be enforced in every other street in District Two, then it needs to be enforced on Conti Street. If the house is in disrepair and it's been sitting there for a while, then nuisance abatement needs to go out there, ticket it, put a notice on it, and tell them they got so many days to fix it up. If not, then it goes and it goes through the process. It may even need to go to environmental court. But it is not, it is not equal and equitable when one group, person, or entity is overlooked but we're tearing down everyone else's. And if we're even tearing down people's property that want to fix them up but don't have the revenue to fix them up. There's revenue to fix these up. So I don't see the, the fairness and equity there. If one group, if everybody else in this city has to abide by the rules and everybody else, then everybody should be abiding by the same set of rules. And if a citizen asks us for a meeting, then we should be granting them that meeting. We're a public servant. It's our responsibility to be both responsive and responsible. And if we can't do that, then there's a problem with us up here, and they should run us out of here. So I would hope that we respond to the request for this meeting soon, and we sit down with all the parties involved, and we try to work this out because it's not going to do anything but get worse if we don't turn and face it. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Pan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Katie, for coming down. Of course, I talked to you as well. I know that's not located in, in District One, but of course, Katie lives in District One, and, and I represent her, and, and I support her, and I support this initiative to figure out what's going on. And I think it's very vital that we're able to implement ordinance properly. Residents have been dealing with this issue. If you're living in that, on that particular street, you don't want to see a property looking like this. So why are we allowing it? We need to come together, we need to figure this out, together, but we shouldn't allow these things to take place. So you have my support as well, and, and let's figure this thing out. Thank you, Mr. President.
Attorney.
So, Mr. President? So I just want to clarify two things. To the extent, each and every time we have had a report on these houses, we have sent out our people for historic to deal with them appropriately, and that happened as late as yesterday. We do have parameters of what's wrong. The next step will be to consistently send out municipal enforcement and to move forward accordingly and treat this property just like we treat everyone else. We, we have no, no problem doing that. What I will say is what's slightly different is, under the law, historic properties are treated differently than properties that are not in a historic district when it comes to municipal enforcement. And so we're not necessarily stringent in the historic area in large part because of preservation and protection. So we do have parameters that, that deal with those issues. But to the extent we will use the full level of enforcement, whether it's securing or demo on these properties and move forward accordingly, as, as you've asked.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Carroll.
Thank you. I, I would say thank you to council that, for that statement, but under our Nuisance Abatement Act, there is a timeframe in which the City of Mobile acts from point of notice to the time that it's given to an owner to respond and react. We're well beyond that time at this point in time. So I appreciate you saying that people have been going out, but they've been going out for a long time now without us moving forward with the, in the proper procedures of our ordinance. So thank you for saying that, but we still haven't done anything. We can go out there all we want, but if we don't move the process forward, then we haven't done anything.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Reynolds.
I've got a question. Ms. Herndon provided us with this printout of the ordinance, and it provides Section A, and this is under forty-four eighty-three, failure to provide ordinary maintenance or repairs. And it goes through, you know, foundation, exterior walls, roof, stairs, windows, so on and so forth. Then it also goes to Section B, vacant buildings, with my understanding these buildings are in fact vacant. In the case of an unoccupied, unoccupied buildings, a mothballing plan approved by the board may be used in lieu of the standards contained in this section. The board in this case, I guess this is for the lawyers, is this the MHDC, the Architectural Review Board? And, and if the city wanted to tear this down, could they do it without the approval of either one of those bodies? Or move, whatever?
So there's, there's a different, so it's MHDC, and it's, it's, it's a different, it's a combination of entities, okay, when you're dealing with historic properties? You got to deal with Architectural Review Board, which is, if y'all remember, was a very involved process when these houses were attempted to be moved without the proper permit. The city stopped that from happening. It then went in front of the ARB, which you've got to go and deal with them, and you've got to talk to the MHDC if you're dealing with historic properties under our policies and procedures. So it's both things, right? So then, you also have to follow our Property Maintenance Code. It's much more involved in the historic area than it would be in an area that is not historic. And so to say that there's been nothing done is not necessarily accurate because we have followed the process. We did, however, pause during that controversy when there was some idea that the house may be moved or may be properly permitted and fixed. My understanding now is it's just as soon as yesterday, the historic people were on site, they have noted the problems, and we will follow up with municipal enforcement. So, you know, the mothballing, that is, that is a separate process, but I don't think that's what they're asking for here. We've not received any requests, we being the city, to do so. So I think the next step is to follow through with property maintenance. Exactly. Notice of violation, and then sending the folks out, and then dealing with that process.
Okay, I think that's what they were.
Mr. President?
I think that's what the speakers were asking for is to provoke some sort of movement on it, and, you know, whatever the decision is by the enforcement arm, you know, whether that be a fine be levied or whatever, provoking some sort of action. It sounds like if they went out yesterday, that process is underway. So, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. President? Just so that council knows, I go by there all the time, notice of violation has already been given. We haven't moved beyond that step with consequences for lack of response. I, I think that's what they're, they're saying and everyone else is saying. It, it's been stuck in the mud and no action. Again, there's been a request for meeting. Nobody wants to see the property, property torn down. They don't want to see it in disrepair or, or neglect. They want the property restored and properly set on the block where it was. That leads me back again to demolition by neglect. City just, just had a match, I think, of twelve thousand dollars against an eighteen thousand dollar grant for the rewriting of certain sections of the guidelines. I, I think that in this process, we need to pay a lot of attention to the section on demolition by neglect and, and how we handle those and, and what processes that we take that are proper to make sure that we just don't let properties sit there, not just in historic districts, but anywhere else, and just fall apart and get on the ground and, and, and demo themselves for lack of response or lack of a homeowner or property owner taking care of them. We need to have some type of clawback to where others with resources can do the work or, or something like that. or something like that. But that's another thing. But again, this is about nothing being done after notice of violation. We're well beyond that, months beyond that. So if we're gonna do something about that, then let's please do it.
Moment of clarity as well, just wanna tell you. So any time, so one notice of violation has gone out from one of the properties, the other one has not, okay? That'll be forthcoming. But when, no matter who you are, if you're on Conca Street or if you're one of the folks who came here and spoke today, if you start the permitting process, whether you get a permit or you ask, we treat you the same, all right? Whether you get the permit or you tell us you're gonna get the permit, we give you an extension. Our process is not to tear vacant structures down at first glance. Our process is to force people into compliance and get them to do what we ask them to do, either remediate the property, allow us to demo the property, or to sell it. In this particular instance, it's been much more fanfare and public attention paid to it. Of course, we know that. Permits went out. Notice of violation will be issued on the second property, but we will have municipal enforcement go out on both properties and move forward.
Thank you. I believe we're in agreement on that.
Madam Clerk?
Sabrina Mas. Sabrina Mas, I'm here to speak about the Kenyon Brown Report. Upon last week, of course, we know their new information came out about the educator and administrator at Excel Academy, which is very, very disturbing upon what has happened to Chief Prime. As far as I'm concerned in the citizens, the report is trash. $300,000 for what? For a city that's divided? Seven murders in one month? Have not heard anything from the new chief or interim chief? Silence. And I would like to say, since when in America, from congressional to senate to the court of law, to the police, to the military, when have they ever had a limited scope of an investigation in America from any legislative body or municipality? That in itself is illegal and very questionable, again. And if there's a whistleblower such as Chief Prime, we will say, why hasn't anyone from this council chose to have him to sit down to see? Because the news can only limit what is exposed. The news can only tell limited amount of what the chief has exposed. Why are you guys not want to sit down and talk to this chief? Because you've talked to the administration, everyone at this table. Why haven't you guys given this man an opportunity to sit down in executive sessions to talk to you guys to see what it is that needs to be revealed other than a limited amount? This is a bunch of bull. And now, see, every time I try to be coming down here to be peaceful, some other new information comes out. So there's two lives destroyed, Prime and an administrator that could possibly have went to jail, have lost his license, tarnished their reputations, loss of his family, loss of income. Do y'all not understand how serious this situation is? It's a very serious situation that we are dealing with in this city. And I'm thankful today that people are choosing to be public servants. Thank you. Because you are supposed to be just that, public servants. We want a thorough investigation and not a scope. And oh, $100,000? Well, why didn't you give Kenyon Brown $100,000? Okay, so now it's about the money. It's never been about the money in three years on this council and this administration. Oh, how many millions and millions have been lost and just thrown out in the wind in three years? Give this man a fair investigation. The citizens will not rest until it's done, I'm telling you. It's not gonna stop. We are no fools. We are an intelligent, intellectually educated people, and we will keep up with it. So stop saying a scope of investigation. No, the full investigation. Sit down and figure out what's going on, because there is definitely something going on. And it's making us feel there's many people hiding something that is, it sounds like it's some people that are really, truly thinking something may come out that doesn't need to come out. Y'all got to do better.
Mr. President?
Uh, yes?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanna thank every speaker for coming and sharing their thoughts and ideas. I hear the concern about Chief Prime's career. I hear about the investigation. But throughout this time, we're not forgetting the lives of African Americans that was lost. A sixteen-year-old. We're not gonna talk about that. We're not gonna, we're not gonna, we're not gonna mention those things. The truth started to speak, we see what happens. I'm not afraid, and I'm gonna continue to speak truth. I continue to listen when people talk. I don't get up and leave, because I'm not disrespectful. I listen, I hear everyone concerned. But the truth of the matter is, it is a lot of stuff that's going on, and that's why we're doing the third-party investigation. We wasn't there. I can't speak about a situation if I wasn't there. But I could tell you that a sixteen-year-old gone, and what are we gonna do about it? I could tell you that we was trying to put procedures in place. I could tell you that it was situations that took place and with information that we received, it then looked well. And now, we're not saying that every police officer is bad. That's my, I just don't even, I don't get the argument. I don't get the argument. You asked us to investigate this situation, but don't say nothing about this. Investigate this, but don't investigate this matter. And I'm not gonna do it. And I can get called out, you can go on every radio show, you can go on TV show, you can tag me in every social media post. I'm not gonna change who I am. I'm gonna stand for my community, and I'm gonna speak truth. And you can go live. It don't bother me. God got me.
Mr. President?
Now, I'm still talking.
Sorry. I just wanna get a piece of it.
Okay, you can wait when I finish. And that's no disrespect, but I was, my sentence wasn't complete. We have to get to a point where we don't allow these things to continue, and I understand people say, well, I'm a, people wanna hold us more accountable than they hold theyself. Hold yourself as just accountable. We all need to move forward together. We will do this third-party investigation, but please, let's talk about this, let's talk about that sixteen-year-old. Please, let's talk about it. Because a parent lost a child. What you want me to tell that child, that parent? Yes, a chief might have lost a job, but a parent lost a child who would never become a chief, would never walk in their career. And you can say whatever you want, and I'm not blaming that police officer, but what I'm saying is, because something could have been done different to change the narrative. But we don't wanna have those conversations, because now it just look like we pointing fingers. But then you want me to have the investigation to save a situation about a career, though? But this is a life that I'm trying to save. You talking about careers, I'm talking about lives. So I'm focused on people's lives. And if I sound passionate, that's I am. Because this is a serious matter. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me be direct. This is about people's lives, but let's talk about some people. I watched some of you in that meeting on that Thursday night on Bayou Street. I watched one of you point and say, "Oh, man, I love this man. He's the best in town. I trust whatever he says. He's the greatest. He's the past whatever, whatever lawyer there is. He is the greatest." And we can believe and trust everything he says. But then the minute you turn around, the minute you turn around and there's something else, "Oh, his report is wrong, it's bad, it's the worst thing that we've ever had. He should have never been up there." I heard what the people said that night. I heard that the people asked for an independent third-party investigation. We have done that. We've got two good council members vetting a lawyer now to get a clear, one that's clear, independent as can be, and one that's gonna be as fair as can be. But when you continue to spew information into the public that is misguided and a lie, then we have a problem because now you're driving the public to a belief that they believe that you're not basing on the truth. We are going to have a solid, independent, third-party investigation. But to get to the truth, then we all need to tell the truth. And we don't need to continue to put this information out there that's not true. If you believed in that man in the beginning, then you need to believe in him now. If you believed in both, then you need to continue to believe in them. But don't swing back and forth like a dipolar atom or a doggone, well, forgive me for saying this, like a bipolar individual. If you wanna have justice, you can't bring in justice. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues. I was present at that meeting too, and individual person swear up and down that Kenyon wouldn't do this to the report and wanna do that to the report. Now, just like Jesus, you know, they were calling Messiah, then they turn back around and say crucify him. Now you have the individual saying crucify him. But the most important thing is, and if I'm wrong, City Attorney, correct me, the report, the Brown report, you know, was designed to look at the policies and procedures of the police department. It was not to oust no particular chief, major, lieutenant, captain, or anyone else. You know, that information that came from Mr. Brown, that information was subject for what some of his findings was. But the intended target for the City of Mobile was to look at the policies and procedures. The rest of that stuff that Mr. Brown has stated, that was his opinion, it came from him. But again, what CJ was focusing on was the policies and procedure. And as I say, you know, as my colleague has stated, a sixteen-year-old had lost a life. It was more than just that sixteen-year-old. We have seven mothers that have lost children. So that warrant us to look at the policies and procedures of, you know, of the City of Mobile Police Department.
Madam Clerk?
Robert Clopton?
Counsel Administration, good morning. I'm Robert Clopton. I'm representing the Mobile branch of the NAACP. I'm here today to talk with you all about Project Wear Orange to Stop Gun Violence. But first, let me back up a little bit and tell you a little bit something about the NAACP. Again, you all have heard our mission so many times from me, but yet, let me change it for you. Let me break it down somewhat. Our mission is to achieve equity, political rights, and social inclusion by advancing policies and practices that expand human and civil rights and eliminate discrimination and accelerate well-being for all people. We activate, we advocate rather, for justice wherever injustice is perceived to exist. We advocate because an injustice here or there is injustice everywhere, and we advocate to eradicate discrimination. Well, maybe in mental health awareness month, as we accelerate our well-being or the well-being of the community, we have shared our mental health flyer with valuable information throughout the community. Mental health has a tendency to affect gun violence as well. I'm sure we're all aware of that. Our members, we mentor our local schools, community organizations. We donate food to the needy, personal hygiene items to the homeless, and we give funds and gifts, monetary donations to whoever is in need. Last week, we had a blood drive. We had a blood drive mainly because of the fact we wanna help save lives as well. And you know, it's great to know that the blood I gave last week could save someone's life in here, or a member, or a friend, or a relative. You never know, but my blood is out there waiting on you. And to accelerate well-being, we are completing our year-long project that highlights the adverse effects of escalation and rewards and de-escalation and conflict resolution. We should roll that out by September. It's an outstanding plan. However, in between time and the meantime, our next goal to try to help save lives is through our Project Orange. It will be celebrated on June 7th here in Mobile, June 7th through 9th throughout the state of Alabama. Because we have to determine, we have to eliminate and decrease the number of guns falling into the wrong hands, make a determination of where they come from, and then again, decrease. Because I don't think we will ever eliminate gun violence entirely. So the ubiquity of gun violence has changed the way we live. We're currently in a nowhere to run, nowhere to have fun, nowhere to worship, and nowhere to hide scenario. Please, join us, show unity. Let's wear orange, June 7th. Meet me here in the atrium. Meet me here in the atrium and let's unite to show the city and the county and the world that Mobile is against gun violence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clopton.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Pan?
Thank you, Mr. Clopton, for coming down. I totally agree with you. We have to come together, and I would definitely have my orange on. Orange is my favorite color, you know. I graduated from John Ela, Florida, the best high school in the world, and our colors are orange and green, so I always have my orange on. But on June the 1st, like some people stated that we're not talking about issues that's facing our city. Recently, we had an incident that, some gun violence that took place in Tomberville. Immediately, I responded and stated that we need to do something in our community. And I'm working on programs already. Got an eight-week curriculum that we're working to implement in Tomberville. And on June the 1st, we're doing a peace rally. I would love to have you there, your team. But the goal is, we have to encourage our youth. Matter of fact, on last week, I had to leave out a little early because my goal was to go to a conference on one of the largest, one of the largest conferences discussing how can we encourage our youth to get focused. And one of those things that, in that conference, it talks about is family first. That we have to work on family, right? That family, that core. And a lot of times, we think the family core is, you know, the two-parent household. But family core, I was raised with a single-parent household, and my mother had me when she was in high school. And look, I was able to still be successful. It's not all about how your household will look, but making sure that family core is successful, and that's what we have to do. And the second thing, it talked about health, what you just talked about, making sure that mental health component is properly in physical health and making sure they have the proper resources and food and all those things, that's something that we've been talking about. And that last one was safety and protection of our youth. Of course, gun violence and all these other different things. But you know, another thing, Mr. Clopton, that it talked about, and I think that we have to make sure, it talked about predators. It talked about people who go after our kids and youth. And you know something, and I just wanna let, and I said, man, when they talked about that, I got fired up, Mr. Clopton. And I said, listen, I cannot allow predators to go after our youth and our kids because they are going after them, and they causing some things to take place because they are doing things and they harming them. And from a mental standpoint, they can go out and do crazy things. And what I found, a lot of them try to go and get active in youth organizations. And they wanna disguise theyself as they're doing things, but they wanna get active. And it's actually destroying our community. And some of them, and I just wanna let people know, if you're watching right now, or if you are sitting in this room right now, I'm telling you right now, we are not playing with you. Parents, if you know anyone, if you're watching online, if you know anyone that's doing, please report these things because this is a serious matter. Please report anything you know, because we have to protect our kids. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Clopton, if you have anything as far as we can stick in our newsletter, like a picture or link or anything, we'd love to do that. We can put that in for you.
So I will get to flyers to you all.
Awesome, thank you.
June is just a week away. So I mean, this week will be the last good week to get in the newsletter, so you think you'll have it by Friday, Thursday?
Well, I'll just go back and make a couple of corrections, I guess. Well, I'll just go back and make a couple of corrections, I guess, and get it to you tonight.
Yeah.
I have a meeting tonight, so we'll have someone get it to you by the time you wake up in the morning. And again, let me say, like my band say, Mr. Penn, Councilman Penn, peace starts at home. We'll have that to you by daybreak tomorrow.
Thank you. Mr. President, before you move on, can I take a point of personal privilege, please?
Yes.
Just a second ago, I used the word bipolar. Bipolar, as we all know, is a term used for mentally challenged a lot. And using that word, it was used as an analogy as to how people react. By no means was it meant to say that someone was mentally challenged or a probe or a child at the mentally challenged. Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk.
Ashley Harrison.
Is Ms. Harrison available? Okay. Madam Clerk.
Eileen Corcoran.
What is Ms. Corcoran speaking about?
Resolution 6473, the investigation.
Thank you.
Members of the council, the seven of you have been gracious enough to call for an investigation into the allegations made by former Chief Prime. While I do appreciate-
Give us your name, yeah?
Eileen Corcoran. Are we good?
Yes, ma'am.
You sure?
I just asked for your name.
All right. Members of the council, the seven of you have been gracious enough to call for an investigation into the allegations made by former Chief Prime. While I do appreciate the effort, I'm concerned about what exactly council's powers will allow it to do with the report's findings. If my memory serves me correctly, when council hired a former federal employment law judge in December of 2018 to investigate employee claims of abuse coming from top supervisors and others higher up, it was stated on numerous occasions that council could not tell the mayor what to do when it came to employees. Even when this final report came out and a majority of the abuse claims and racist behaviors were affirmed, nothing could be done and nothing was done. Even when the investigating retired judge stated in his closing paragraphs that the elimination of my position was retaliatory in nature, nothing happened. So again, my question is, what can you do with the information that you get from this report?
That's your question?
Yeah.
Yeah. And to give you an answer, and I think we have stated several times, if there's anything that is wrongdoing, we will turn it over to the DA, Justice Department, Attorney General, whatever we need to do, we will turn the information over if we find anything that's wrong.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Penn.
I know I'm speaking a lot today. But I thank you so much for coming down and saying that Councilman Small stated, and he did an amazing job stating this. He asked Chief Prime, turn everything over to legal. Turn everything to the DA, Attorney General. Turn anything to the executive commission. Turn everything, anything you have criminal activity, right? And as a law enforcement person, I just, you know, what we would tell the public, if anything that you know illegal, turn that information in, right? Well, Councilman Small asked them to do that. And I don't know if that information has been turned in yet. So we have to do a third-party investigation. And hopefully, if something does come up, if that, you know, then we'll move forward. But we asked for that. That was the whole point. If it's a criminal activities taking place, you would think that you would turn that information in because that's what we tell the public to do. I mean, we're asking people to do stuff that we not willing to do ourselves. Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk.
Ordinance is held over. If there's no objection, I'll take all three. 64030, rezoned property located at 1100 Spring Hill Avenue from R2 B1 and B3 to B3. 64031, consider modification of a previously approved planned unit development for property located at 3201 Airport Boulevard and 410 and 450 Bel Air Boulevard. 64033, consider modification of a previously approved planned unit development for property located at 3674 and 3680 Dolphin Street.
So moved.
They're promptly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Consent resolutions held over, 40-235. Declare the structure at 550 Osage Street, a public nuisance, and order it demolished.
Motion table.
Second.
And promptly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion table.
Resolution is held over, 01428. Authorize extension of purchase and sale agreement for 720 Museum Drive. 08429, approve purchase order to CDW Government for annual subscription renewal for network protection software. 08430, approve purchase order to Clyde Armory for 12-gauge shotguns. 08431, approve purchase order to GT Distributors of Georgia for 9mm pistols. 08432, approve purchase order to Mill Creek Manufacturing for field top dresser. 08433, approve purchase order to Sunbelt Fire for fire bunker gear. 21434, authorize contract with AA Construction Company for re-roofing for Tomerville Library. 31435, authorize covenant of purpose, use, and ownership with the U.S. Department of Treasury for Africa Town Welcome Center.
So moved. Second.
And promptly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass this.
Ordinance is being introduced, 64034. Consider modification of a previously approved planned unit development for property located at 145, 151, 176, 195, 350, and 400 Dunlap Drive. Oh, sorry, at 34035.
By council rules, these will lay over for one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced, 37437 through 37472.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second.
And promptly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived.
37437, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a special events retail license to Southeastern Combat Championships on Hit Road.
So moved. Second.
Promptly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
I'll call out 438 and 439 together. 4438 and 4439, declare the structures at 601 Tata Street and 550 Williams Street, public nuisances, and order them demolished.
Motion level 30 days.
Second.
Promptly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'll lay over for 30 days.
4440, declare the structure at 2859 Ralston Road, a public nuisance, and order it demolished. 441, fix cost for demolition of structure at 1324 Jesse Street. 442, fix cost for demolition of structure at 609 South Wilson Avenue. 443, fix cost for demolition of structure at 1163 Gent Street. 444, fix cost for demolition of structure at 1555 Clover Street. 445, fix cost for demolition of the structure at 515 Yoker Street. 446 and 447 are fixing cost for demolition of structures at 1567 and 1575 Robert E. Lee Street. 448 is fixing cost for demolition of the structure at 1353 Windsor Avenue. 449 is fixed cost for securing of the structure at 5450 Coca-Cola Road. And 450 is fixing cost for demolition of the structure at 7272 Fourteenth Street. 6451 and 452 are approving awards of special bonuses to the firefighter of the month and officer of the month. 6453, determine appropriation to Westside Athletic Association of Mobile, serves a public purpose, and approve payment. 37470, 471, and 472 are recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of special retail more-than-30-day licenses to Ovation Food Services for the Civic Center, Convention Center, and Sanger Theater.
So moved.
Second.
They're promptly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
CIP resolution is being introduced, 08454 through 21456.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of 08-454 as well as 21-456 with 09455 being laid over for one week.
Second.
Promptly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk.
08454, approve purchase order to Dennis Aluminum Products for decorative aluminum signposts for Parks Department. 21456, authorize contract with H&amp;H Electric Company for electrical upgrades to Azalea City Golf Course Irrigation Pump Facility.
So moved.
Second.
And promptly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolution is being introduced, 01457 through 6473.
By council rules, these will lay over for one week.
Call for public hearings, 41469. Call for a public hearing to assent to the vacation of a portion of a service road and right-of-way located at Millwood Drive and Medical Park Drive, scheduled for June 25th.
So moved.
Second.
Promptly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearings called.
Announcements.
District One, Councilman Penn.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Again, to District One, on last week, I had to leave out early. I want to make sure that I'm serving District One. But I had a flight. I try to stay long as possible. But I wanted to get informations and strategies to bring back to the city of Mobile to solve some of these issues and challenges that we see. This morning, I missed pre-council. My son crossed over. And I didn't want to miss that opportunity to see that. And so, but I clearly made sure that I went over all the different things. And I'm here to serve you. I want you to stay connected to District One. Text "mobilecd1" to 91896. If you text that, you'll be able to get updates about different things that are taking place in District One. On June the 1st, we will have an amazing event. It's called Rally in District One. We're inviting all the different schools, organizations. We're going to be announcing our adopt the school initiative. That adopt the school initiative will be for nonprofits and groups that are supporting our youth. And they will be announcing the schools that they will be supporting. But we also will have amazing speakers as well as live entertainment at the best high school in the world, that's John Ela, Florida High School, located in District One at the stadium. So we're inviting everybody. This is not just a District One thing. This is a city of Mobile thing. I want to thank the administration for supporting this initiative, the school system for supporting this initiative. And I'm inviting everyone out. Let's come out. We're going to be, a lot of things will be taking place. If you have questions, you can reach out to me. But we're going to have a great time on June 1st at 9:00 a.m. at LaFlore Stadium, John Ela, Florida Stadium. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Penn. District Two, Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Truly, the representation for District One is back on the podium. We've heard quite a bit from him today. It's almost a reminiscence of Mr. Richardson back in the day. Let me say that over the last weekend, we had a rash of, in a rush of burglaries in Church Street East and Oakley and downtown. And this guy ran rampant for a few days and had quite a few incidences and also some on the parkway. Let me take this moment and actually thank the police department and the detectives that did a great job. They actually caught him yesterday. Caught him actually at Arlington and, or, I'm sorry, at Cotrell and Anne Streets. So, or Duval and Anne Streets. So, great job to the Mobile Police Department. We really appreciate you guys getting on that very quickly and helping to get this thing caught. Also, let me thank all the residents and the neighbors that provided the videos and pictures and, you know, the way that the neighborhood system actually worked with cameras from house to house to house and all down the street and into other communities. Without you guys' help, this wouldn't have happened as quickly as it did. So thank you to the neighbors and an extremely big thank you for the police department getting that done. Also, on June 1st, I will be at Prince and Peace Catholic Church for their annual lawn fest party where they serve the community and do things in outreach of that community. I'll be there. I encourage all of you that are in District Two and those of you that will be over at the rally to come by and see us after you leave the rally or see us over there as we support the community in efforts over at Prince and Peace on June 1st. Also, coming up in the next three weeks, I will host, let me say, another month because I will be hosting the community meeting for the other section of District Five that is now part of District Two. We'll be getting our notices out to those neighbors so that we can actually start introducing ourselves to that area out there and respond to some of the calls that I'm getting out there, too. Mr. Joles, Mr. Dave's has been so gracious enough to also copy me on those emails. And I'll actually help respond to those as we make that transition. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. District Four, Councilman Reynolds. All right, District Five, Councilman Davez.
Unfortunately, I have no time left because my time was taken up by Mr. Carroll and Mr. Penn.
District Six, Councilman in the Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to remind everybody in District Six and the city as a whole, Saturday night at Meadowbonner Park, the Mobile Sophonic Pops are going to be playing their Memorial Day concert. Starts at 6:00. So Meadowbonner Park, it should be a great night.
All right, District Seven, Vice President Gregory.
No announcements.
Okay. And attention to the citizens of District Three. This week has been another great week, especially on Baltimore Street. Many citizens have been asking for speed bumpers on Baltimore Street. And it's been an ongoing battle for the last several days. I have been receiving phone calls of the residents are happy to slow down traffic. And Pastor Clark came in this morning and stopped me and saying, thank you for the stop sign that they put up stop signs. So I thank the administration for working with me. Got accolades from the daycare to Taylor Park and to the people at 1010 Baltimore Street and the residents because we had some incidents on Baltimore Street. But thank you so much. Another great day. And on tomorrow morning, I will be the guest speaker at Pillins Middle School on the cross-inover ceremony for the fifth graders looking for and being the guest speaker on tomorrow morning. Anything from the administration?
Motion to adjourn.
And promptly moving second and in discussion. We do have a committee meeting at 1:00 today. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This means adjourn.